Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 12th, 2024 work session of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Canauer.
Canauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyshar.
Wyshar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Burigno here.
All right. We have minutes from our November 12th meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Can I entertain a...
Tidings to approve.
Canauer second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke aye.
Canauer.
Canauer aye.
Tidings.
Tidings aye.
All right. Doug, you want to go through our tabled applications?
Yep. So, our first tabled application is a tabled sketch plan. So, after the last meeting, the board drafted a sketch letter. We did just recently make a couple of changes overall, summarize the events of the sketch plan. I think the most significant comment back to the applicant was in relation to the lighting to, as they potentially submit for preliminary and final site plan approval, to take a look at not only the new lighting that would be proposed as part of the building, but existing lighting and that there may be changes necessary to existing lighting to remain in compliance or to be in compliance.
Yeah. My visit to the site, it's clear to me that there's a number of fixtures that need to change their aiming or be changed. That's a... I'm, based on what the neighbor said, a significant issue, so...
Speak up. We can't...
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I think I barely heard Doug.
We will endeavor to speak louder.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the lighting there needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
But otherwise, to me, the sketch, the letter, looks good.
Okay.
Other members, comments on the letter?
Yeah, I agree. I was, I took a drive around the site too, and particularly the light around the dumpster, it was just straight out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, if that can be addressed.
Yeah, they're not catastrophically difficult things to fix, so... But as a neighbor, I can understand the concerns. Terry, any concerns with the...
I don't know. No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Somebody want to move to send the letter?
Yeah, I'll move.
Tidings second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke aye.
Canauer.
Canauer aye.
Tidings.
Tidings aye.
Moving on. So, our second tabled application is one of our preliminary finals. So, this is the Verizon cell tower at the Penfield Volunteer Ambulance. Excuse me. So, the applicant, after our meeting, the applicant did appear before the zoning board on November 21st. They did receive all required variances. In this case, it was for lot size and for the setback fall zone.
Make sure you talk into the mic.
So, one item that did come up is I wanted to address, we did have some comments regarding cell towers in general. Section 704B of the Telecommunications Act limits the, limits the board's ability to make any determinations or take adverse actions on a cell tower on the basis of radio frequency as long as they are within FCC regulations and defined parameters. It is considered, it is an area that the board cannot review.
There's federal regulations that supersede any powers that we may or may not have.
Correct. Preemption by federal statute.
Correct.
So, we can't, only certain things that we can consider in terms of how we evaluate it.
After the hearing as well, the volunteer ambulance has access from two locations. Verizon did suggest that they would be able to use either access. The location will be closer to the driveway to the north. There is an existing access easement, both through deed and covenant restrictions in the deed for 1579 Jackson Road as well as a easement, filed easement for access to the volunteer ambulance location.
And that's been in place for decades, right?
1968.
1968?
Correct. So, we did include a copy of that with the language for your review. Wanted to make note of another point from the zoning board hearing as part of the zoning board application, that a zoning board requested and the applicant agreed to take down the existing 80-foot antenna tower that exists behind the, the existing volunteer ambulance.
So, the idea is one tower come down, another one will go up?
Correct. So, they did provide revised plans and responses to comments. One comment that did come up during the public hearing was the, the initial application included a backup generator that was going to be powered through onsite storage of propane. It was brought up during the public hearing, the potential for the use of natural gas since there is a two-inch natural gas line that does run on the north side of Jackson Road there on the property side. And whether they could tie into that, they did come back and propose a diesel generator in place of the propane generator.
So, I've always thought natural gas and propane were essentially the same thing.
Yeah, pretty much.
Pretty much, right?
They're very similar.
Yeah.
So, why...
They're going to be the cleanest. And I think, my thought was, from a refill perspective, the fact that there's natural gas service on the...
Instead of having a tank and having to refill it, why not just tap in and...
Exactly. And the...
Wouldn't require different equipment, would it? I mean, in terms of a generator, should be the same.
And the backup generator for the ambulance building is natural gas.
Okay.
So, that's what they're going to use?
Well, they proposed diesel for...
First propane.
In response to us suggesting a natural gas versus propane. The first one was propane, right?
Correct.
That they suggested?
Yeah. Environmentally, too, it's better, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so...
I'm not sure why.
If that's something you want to directly address with the applicant, they are in the audience.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what's the problem with going with natural gas? You come right up here because you need to be on the record.
I'm sorry. Let's move sit down. She'll be on.
Test?
Yeah. Good evening, members of the board. Jared Lust from Nixon Peabody, representing Verizon. We did inquire with the team's construction manager and they, they, the standard is actually diesel. They were wondering how it was propane and they routinely use diesel in a tertiary tank, double tank, et cetera. And rather, and it's much easier for them to do that rather than running the, running the supply line to the, you know, make a connection to the, to the natural gas line, et cetera, out in front. So, from Verizon's operational perspective, they would prefer it be diesel.
What did we approve on the other one, Jared?
Terry, speak up.
I'm asking them what we did on the last Verizon tower we approved.
I don't believe there was a backup generator as part of the four corners.
I honestly, Terry, don't recall.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's a backup on that.
There wasn't one identified.
And where, where is the backup generator for the, how close would that be? How far away would they have to run a line? I mean, is it seriously that far away?
Can you get back to the aerial view? So, the generator is in the back corner there. See the red car? It's right around there. Yeah.
And theirs would be just a...
Well, the existing generator?
The existing generator, I believe.
No, it's on the south side.
It's on the south side now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you pull in there, it's, it's there. But the service would be on Jackson Road.
Yeah, the entire, the entire, we would run an entirely new service, not run from...
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's on the other side of the building. So, again, we were...
You'd have to go from the road.
Yeah. Yes, sir. If you can hear me.
And alternatively, it'd be a diesel tank buried or on the surface?
It's actually an enclosed unit. The generator will sit on top of a double-walled diesel tank that's alarmed, et cetera, and not much, it's only used once, again, when the power's out, it'll get used, but traditionally it's on for about a half hour, once a week to test it, run it like you do in any home, home facility. And again, it's only, there's also batteries there for about eight hours worth of, there's backup batteries in the cabinets that will run the, run the cell tower for about eight hours. So, you have the generator and the battery backup.
Does the diesel need to be replaced periodically? What's the life of the fuel if you use a diesel?
I think they manage that. I've never had that question asked. I've never heard of them. Honestly, they must manage, there's so many of the diesel generators. I think it must turn over fast enough because it's running every week, et cetera.
Yeah, going through its tests, I...
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, you know, from my perspective, it just seemed like it would be just a cleaner way of providing fuel for the backup, having the gas there as, you know, as the ambulance service is using. So, you know, I don't think yet.
Nico Facey for the record. So, the reason, the initial reason why it was propane, because of the wetlands, initially when we submitted environmental on the site, we submitted as propane and waiting for Verizon territory to tell us whether or not the diesel enclosure would be approved, which they did after we got our plan submitted. So, they've come back to us and say, we're good for the diesel because that's Verizon's standard throughout the company nationwide, not just here, but their preference is diesel.
Okay.
So, it's a company standard, not what we wanted to do, but as a company standard for Verizon is what they want us to do.
Okay. Do you mind stating your name for the record again?
Yes, Nico Facey.
Okay, thanks, Nico.
He's Verizon's real estate consultant who's...
Okay. Mike, any...
I mean, as long as they've gotten the DEC approval, you know, I don't see necessarily issue with it. It's probably more of, you know, they have to get county permit to tap the gas line and then they have to have an RGE meter at the spot for, you know, how to regulate how much gas they're using. So, it's probably a cleaner system. In theory, not having all that other equipment, it's not necessarily cleaner running machine, but, you know, that type of thing. So, it's probably just, I don't have an issue with it.
All right. Are you satisfied with the answers?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was, it was just something I wanted to point out, you know, other projects, commercial projects, if they have backup generators, a lot of them will use natural gas.
And they have a building that they have a meter attached to.
True.
So, this is probably a standalone type of scenario, so it's now like they're tapping off the ambulance gas line.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're good with diesel?
It's something we should explore, though, in the near future, I think, because I'm sure we'll be having more Verizon towers or towers going up that, something to think about down the road there, you know?
Yeah, I think up to this point, we really haven't, you know, there isn't anything really in place that says it has to be this or it has to be that.
Right. Right.
I believe there's a diesel generator at the 1192 Schu craft location, which is another cell tower location.
I can't hear anything you're saying.
Oh, sorry. I said, I believe there's a diesel generator at 1192. The other, I think we did that one about six years ago, cell tower.
Yeah. You know, Harris, Harris Hill, the site there, that's propane.
That's propane.
Yeah.
Yeah, in our units, it is a double-encased unit. We can send you the spec sheets on it, but it's a, it's a pretty safe one. It's a new standard that Verizon's been using. It's a double-encased enclosure where it protects from leakage because we know we're close to the wetlands and that's why we go through the steps to get that one approved. So, we can send over the spec sheets for it if you guys would like to see it as well.
We probably should, you know, at least forward the, make sure the fire marshal knows too. If he doesn't know, I'm sure he may know already.
We can provide those specs. I think that's on the plans, but...
Yeah, the building department would get them anyway as part of a building permit application or generator application, too.
Okay. So, we're, we're accepting of the diesel option?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. The other, I think, main thing is the sidewalks, right?
Correct.
So, there's a sidewalk policy?
Yeah, sidewalk policy when any new land development application comes in is to have an, is to require sidewalks residential, it's frontage and any, both sides internal on commercial applications, it's along major frontages.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the policy and I know I spoke to Town Attorney Wyshar about the policy. I've read it about seven times and I'm trying to figure out whether it's, whether it's triggered in the first instance or not and really what, what should be done. We've been in contact with the ambulance with that. Obviously, Verizon's a public utility and it can be different from, I think, we're not per se a developer, but again, we're, we're happy to talk, to work with the town in that, in discuss the relevance of the policy, applicability, and if necessary, a waiver of the policy to the extent that it's appropriate. But again, I've read the policy about seven times and I see the context about new developments and new districts and I, and I don't know what, it doesn't say in the policy when it's triggered, what type of stuff. I've said, Town Attorney Wyshar is a public utility, we're different. When the water authority comes in and makes improvements to their water mains, when the telephone company comes in and makes improvements to their wires, puts in a new, new utility pole, is the town requiring them to put in sidewalk? And the answer is, I'm not sure. That was the answer, I don't know. So, I think it's worth discussing that and we have no issue with doing that. We just ask that the, the planning board provides some flexibility in the, in a condition that allows us to work through that with the town.
I think we can do a condition that requires sidewalks to be installed if it's deemed appropriate under the policy or, well, we can work that language out more specifically.
Yeah, we can work a language out to say something like a condition that they come to an agreement with the town on the, regarding the sidewalks or something like that. And they're installed if deemed applicable or a waiver is granted if applicable.
We got to keep speaking up because if I can't hear, I'm sure nobody else can hear.
Yes. Just, we can, we can include conditional language that would require...
Record that out with the applicant and the property.
All right. I'd like to have it in as a, still, where having the sidewalks is a stronger position than not having sidewalks. No offense to you, and it is a work session, so I just want our position to be a little bit heftier on that.
We can work on the language of that condition.
Okay. Additionally, we have a condition for an easement along the frontage. I don't believe the volunteer ambulance would be opposed to at least filing the easement as well.
We don't have an easement right now.
I don't believe we have an easement along the frontage. We just have a sanitary sewer easement that covers a portion of the corner of the property.
All right.
And then, of course, easement over the building.
Any other issues that you see on this?
No.
We have a...
We've completed a part two, part three narrative for Seeker.
And we got, do we want to vote on that?
Move to approve the Seeker documentation.
Tidings second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke aye.
Canauer.
Canauer aye.
Tidings.
Tidings aye.
Okay, we also have a draft resolution?
Sure. I'll move for a draft resolution.
With the new conditions?
With the changes that we discussed.
Tidings second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke aye.
Canauer.
Canauer aye.
Tidings.
Tidings aye.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. So, do we need to cut, when you said drafts, did we come back for you to adopt the resolution?
No, they're adopting the draft resolution with the changes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, folks.
All right, next.
All right. Tabled application three, 2520 Browncroft Boulevard, the Silver Maple Dental. All right. So, ahead of the last meeting, EEECC reviewed the plans for compliance with the town's Woodlot EPod code, Woodland EPod code. They provided a report and a summary of the findings. They have adopted that report and overall, the report states that the projects are compliant with the code, no additional mitigations are required. The applicant has provided responses to comments and revised plans. Staff will be providing the revised landscaping plan to Bruce for his supplemental review. Additionally, the applicant provided a traffic calculation looking at the ITE trip generations for a dental office of the size for about a 50, 200 square foot dental office. I'd be happy to run through that with you. The trip generation is low and well below the standards, DEC standards for what's considered even a moderate impact or small impact from the Seeker's perspective. Seeker looks at it about a 31,000 square foot dental office, generating about 100 trips would be what's considered a moderate or significant impact.
You got to speak up, Doug.
Sorry. Got to talk really close to the microphone. I'm sorry. So, the applicant did provide a traffic calculation to the board for their review. The traffic calculation was based off of ITE standards for a medical dental office. The overall trip generation is considered very low for the size of the office. They did both a calculation based on the proposed existing practice as well as their growth plan and if they maximized the building occupancy for the size of building that they have. And all three of them are with, are below thresholds for impact.
When was the study done?
The IT, IT standards?
Yeah.
I believe the newest version was 2017, but I...
2017, that was.
Differ, I, let me, I mean, they did the calculations recently using, oh, gosh, I forgot the name, it's Seecro, too, which is a...
You're asking about the ITE standards?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, because I got some concerns with that because the traffic, I think, is a legitimate concern that the people down in that area have voiced. And, you know, even on the review, the correspondence that I reviewed, they make reference to Monroe County DOT. There's not indicated a concern for the traffic count at this time, which leaves it open. I think that, we're referring to that ITE letter, I think that it should be addressed. And I think that the Monroe County or the state, being the large amount of traffic on 286 Atlantic Avenue and Creek Street at their location, I think it's definitely going to have some impact on it with Fast Track. And once this driveway goes in to the dental office there and comes out to Creek Street on there like every day, at least several hours, I think they should look at it, at least give them the option. And the correspondence that I've read, they, Ms. Gasserlick, I believe, requested at legislators and they addressed that issue to do that, I think, to at least ask for a response to get, for a traffic study. And I think they'll probably do it, actually, because, I mean, due to the, the traffic and the, they talk about every day how it's going to be Atlantic and Creek Street's going to be the path to the east side. So, I think it's something we should address. And then, I got correspondence dated December 4th also from the town supervisor requesting also a traffic study at the intersection of Browncroft and Creek Street as part of the package.
The supervisor didn't request a traffic study, the supervisor passed along the residence request.
Residence request, yes, correct.
Okay, so...
So, he agreed, you know, or passed, at least passed it on. So, he felt there was some credence to it and I don't have a problem with it. I mean, at this point, you know, why not? I mean, you know, so...
Have we gotten, forgive me if I didn't see it, but good rationale why it can't tie in also into the existing lot for two access points?
Why they can't tie into Family First for an additional access point off of Browncroft Boulevard?
Yeah, cross-access easement for, for that.
I believe it was a great, I think there's a great difference between the two properties. I mean, alternatively, in the same way that it could provide an alternative access point for the dental office onto Browncroft, it can just as easily provide an access point for the bank, the much larger bank to have an access off of Creek Street.
Off of Creek.
It would, it would eliminate turning from, from Family First heading west and north, going out Browncroft, they would go out Creek Street and north as opposed to...
Yeah, people would leave...
So, it's, it's a double-edged sword.
You know, I think those are all questions that will be addressed, I guess, by DOT in this manner, so unless somebody else got it.
Okay, so, at a minimum, it sounds like you'd like some, at least clarification?
Correct. Yeah. So, I'd like to just make a motion to table it again and get some more feedback on this particular issue.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Hetzke aye.
Canauer.
Canauer aye.
Tidings.
Tidings aye.
Okay.
Okay.
So, clarification on the county cross-access?
Okay, I could do it.
All right.
All right. Next, application number four, Chick-fil-A at 2051 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. So, we have received revised plans and responses to comments. They will be appearing before the zoning board on December 19th for the setback signage and parking variances. Through changes to the site plan, they've been able to reduce the amount of variances that they are requesting. They did provide responses to PRC and the planning board comments, a summary of changes. They are removing the town parking spaces on the west side of the plan. They've outlined the residential buffer on the west side, updated their lot coverage and green space calculations by removing some pavement. They are staying within the allowable green space, shifted the trash enclosure to align with the curb, curb line, make it a little easier for trash pickup, and they revised the landscaping per our landscape consultant's original memo. We can provide the revised landscape plans back to our consultant for further review and consideration.
Okay. Okay. In addition, I'd like to, uh, get Chris Lopez to review the architecture.
The architecture?
Thought we had mentioned that before, but hopefully we can get that done in the next-
Yeah, I'll see if, I'll see if Chris connects, but I didn't get it back to us ahead of the January meeting.
Okay.
What if any setback variances are still being requested?
Uh, the canopy?
So the canopy on the south side.
So it would be to the south?
Correct. That's the only setback variance.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're looking at that signage variance, um, for, I believe, the building mounted side, signage variance for the building mounted signage and, um, a parking variance, parking.
And they no longer need, I don't know if you just said this, but they no longer need the, uh-
Green space.
Green space?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
They have enough.
What about outside, uh, seating? Do they do that, outside seating over there?
They have, they are proposing outside seating, yes.
There were some comments made also about traffic. Is there any feedback on that?
Um, so, um, I'm aware that some comments have been made regarding the traffic. I mean, at this point, they have submitted a traffic impact analysis and report that was reviewed by our consultant. Their, um, conclusions, they agreed in conclusions, so, um, the mitigation proposed is going to be a traffic signal at the intersection of the driveway and, um, Platinum Office Park.
Something about a thirteen minute-
Oh, yes, um, so that, I believe, came out of a misreading of the traffic impact report. So, um, I'd be happy to go through that. Let me pull it up real quick. Yes, so, okay, here we go. Yes, so as part of the traffic impact report, they did a capacity analysis. Don't know if the traffic engineers in the audience tonight, I'm hoping, uh, if they don't mind me, uh, reading off the report. Uh, so they did a, a capacity analysis. Um, the capacity analysis looks at the existing base conditions. The background con- conditions, this won't be built until twenty twenty-five, so the background conditions are looking at a projected, what the existing conditions will be like in twenty twenty-five. Um, and then full build conditions on, um, alternative one, uh, which is installing the, um, traffic signal here at, um, Platinum Office Park in the existing driveway with, um, Penfield Pub and Duncan. Um, and alternative two, which is providing a signalized intersection at, and access point off at Pembroke Drive. Alternative two was a more difficult challenge. Uh, they do not concurrently control the two properties to the north. That would be necessary to, um, gain access to the-
Right.
the intersection at Pembroke. So as part of the analysis, they, they look at what the conditions would be like, um, existing background in twenty twenty-five, and then the full build conditions, what it'll be like when Chick-fil-A, um, is built and in operation. As part of that, they also included the, um, calculations based on the mitigation that they're proposing to do. So they looked at different intersections within the corridor to see the impact on, uh, not just the singular access point, but other intersections, um, that may be impacted. The thirteen minute number comes from the Saturday, um, peak, for left bound turns from the dawn's original, um-
Entrance?
Entrance, heading eastbound, going north on, making a left onto two fifty.
With no signal.
With no signal. So, yes, so that was number two, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the existing driveway unsignalized.
And they're proposing a signal.
And they're proposing a signal. The, so the conditions under unsignalized, insignalized, um, you know, show the improvement that the signal will make, um, for access to and from, um, that section of Parkside Commonant as well as Platinum Office Park. So the thirteen minute number and, um, you know, that one is substantially higher than the rest. I would, I don't know if it was a comment for them to rerun that number. We can, um, see if they can rerun that number and if it comes out the same. But was, um, eight hundred and twenty-one seconds, um, queue time.
But that's to make a-
And that's, that's to make a left, unsignalized on Saturday during, um, peak hours, um, peak weekend hours. For context, um, with the signal, um, the, um, you know, and of course, that, that level of service was a level F. But the proposed level of service with a signalized intersection would be about twenty seconds, twenty-five seconds, which typically accounts for light cycles.
So it's like that thirteen minutes is like providing the basis to allow the signal?
Correct. Yes, yes. So, you know, part of this analysis, you know, also shows, and I believe they call it out, you know, above this in the report, when they go through the warrants for a traffic signal, um, and that was one of the warrants.
Right.
Was the, was the decrease in the level of service at the unsignalized intersection.
Okay.
This is their traffic study?
This is their traffic study.
So we didn't do it and they're using it?
We, we didn't do it, um, you know, so they had, um, S R F associates, or sorry, not S R, S R F, um, it's Passaro now, sorry. Passaro, um, engineering and architecture, um, did the traffics, did their traffic impact report. The board does have, um, on retainer, our own traffic, um, consultants and engineers. So we had Barton LeJudas, our consultants, review it and provide their feedback as well.
Plus then the state reviews it?
Yeah, additionally, uh, state D O T, since it is their road, state D O T reviews it as part of-
What'd you say?
The state D O T reviews it as well, so.
It's Route two fifty, state road.
Correct.
Okay. So, um, it sounds like, I mean, there's a few things that, uh, still require a tabling on this.
Yes.
So we might as well go ahead and, and do that. Can I entertain a motion for that?
Sure. So moved?
Tiding second.
Hetsky?
Hetsky, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Quick point, would you guys want to, I know we provided, the board provided architectural reference, um, to the applicant, um, for-
Provide those to Chris too?
Want to provide those to Chris? Do you want to re-provide them to the applicant and suggest that, um, they take another look at the architecture?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Okay. Next.
All right, that was all the tabled applications. We do have one administrative item. Ten eighty-five, ten ninety-nine State Road, destroy a re-subdivision. So staff received a request for re-subdivision at, uh, ten eighty-five and ten ninety-nine State Road. If you remember back in twenty nineteen, um, you know, ten eighty-five was a twenty-ish acre property. Wrong state road. You know, subdivided a twenty acre property, they, they, we subdivided off, or they subdivided off a one acre parcel in the front. Um, the property owner in, at ten eighty-nine, uh, would like to, um, increase their property size. Um, they are looking to, um, add an accessory structure on the property. So they are looking to shift lot lines between the two lots. They would be purchasing about three quarters or just over three quarters of an acre from ten eighty-five to increase their property to one point seven five or one point seven six acres and reduce ten eighty-five to seventeen point eight six acres. A, um, only complicating factor of the re-subdivision is that a, um, significant portion of the gas lateral that feeds the house at ten eighty-five, uh, would then be on ten ninety-nine State Road. So the applicants there have proposed to, um, the applicants there have proposed to, um, file an easement, um, over the gas main, uh, or gas lateral, um, to allow access to ten eighty-five in the future, should they need to do any repairs to the gas lateral. We do have a, a copy of their draft easement.
Okay.
Our, our only rec, staff's only recommendation would to be, to make the re-subdivision conditional on the filing of the easement. So you wouldn't sign the re-subdivision plat until the easement's in, um, filed in place.
But you're, Mike, you're comfortable with that, Pete?
Yes.
Pete, you're, you're good with that?
If Mike is good with it?
Yeah, Mark.
Okay. All right, anybody have any issues with this?
I'm good if Peter and Mike are good with it.
Seems pretty simple, uh, and he even throws a, throws a slight little monkey wrench into it, but it doesn't sound like it's anything that- is a deal breaker, right? Okay, somebody want to move to approve?
Tidings to approve.
Canower, second.
Hetsky?
Hetsky, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
That's all the, all the business I had for the board.
Okay, well, thanks everybody for coming. Have a great, uh, Christmas and Hanukkah festivus, Kwanzaa, whatever, holiday, and we'll see you in a month.
You too.
We will adjourn.